Good afternoon and welcome to the December 16, 2021 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. Our final meeting for 2021. I'm Greg Musial, Chairman of the Board. If you'd help me start our meeting by saluting our country in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I know we have six trustees here. Trustee Smith Everett had a work function and will be here sometime after the meeting is started. And she adds her regrets that she couldn't be here at the start of the meeting or for the reception that we just had for our two outgoing trustees, Trustee Jerry Cook and Trustee Paul Snyder. I haven't alerted anybody, but Lee and Nancy, if I thought what we do initially is each of us share any thoughts that we might have about Jerry and Paul. And I'll give you a chance to think about it by offering my thanks to both of them. There are people on boards, governing boards, whether it's civic, charitable, elected or otherwise, that don't always do all the work necessary to fulfill their responsibilities. You two are the opposite of that. Always prepared, always know what's in the packet, whether it's for committee meeting or a board meeting. Go out of your way to attend and be involved in not just community college events on campus, but events all over the community and help put the community in community college. And so, speaking for myself, I am going to miss you next year. Jerry, you are the institutional history of the board. And the worst part about your leaving is that it makes me senior, which feels kind of old. But we're seriously going to miss the fact that you have been on this board the longest. You have been through good times and bad. You have led the way on a number of important issues. You've chaired the board on two separate occasions. And I know that that's work, and so I thank you for that. And Paul, in four years, I don't think there's many trustees who have accomplished as much or contributed as much in four years as you have. And so, I will miss you as well on the board. So, thank you both for your commitment to this college and this community. Lee or Nancy? I know I've caught you.
Oh, no, you didn't catch me. I've thought about this because we knew we were going to have some changes. And, you know, I served as your co-chair and not co-chair, your vice chair. And I'm going to start with Jerry as a result of that. But, you know, I was still fairly new to the board and you provided a lot of guidance, if you will. But I think as much as anything, it's KACCt and your reverence for, you know, working with the college system. And I have appreciated that very much. So, that means a lot to me to be able to serve in the capacity that I am right now. And we still talk about Jerry at KACCt and some of the things that he was involved in and his leadership and professionalism, quite frankly, to the organization. So, you'll always be remembered as a result of that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And Paul, you know, I feel like I've known Paul for a while. Paul's wife has been a good friend of mine for a number of years. And so, I felt like I knew you and had kind of followed your career and everything that you do. So, it was genuinely wonderful to have you join the board and, as Greg said, always prepared, always here, always, you know, you would just ask those questions that kind of complemented everything else that was going on. So, I think it really reflects what board service is all about. It's all of us coming together and bringing our questions and being that much stronger for this institution. So, thank you for all of your work.
Thank you.
You'll both be missed.
Unlike all of you, I hadn't given it much thought. I will say that for Paul, I agree with everything that's been said. You were always prepared, hardworking, appreciate above all your civility, kindness. You're curious about things and curious about things that you didn't know or always agree with. And so, I could give examples and I don't want to belabor the point. But at random events throughout the town and community, you'd be there and just curious what's going on and what else was in the world. And I think for Trustee Cook, a number of different things to say, again, agreeing with everything that's been said. But I think his commitment to the institution, being prepared, challenging me and, you know, helping me work through my narcissism to have someone say, you know, you're not prepared or you need to know what this acronym is or know what the org chart looks like because you might have a position of responsibility one day. And I appreciate that more than you know, truly. I said to you something, I think my first year here, you came to me and asked what I thought about your being chair. And I said, "Well, I think you're a fair man Hancock," to quote the Broadway play 1776. And I meant that and I mean it now. I think your professionalism and the words of Nancy and your handling, and I've said it, I think privately and I mean it, your handling of the change of administrations was masterful. And I'm certainly glad that ACCt recognized you as a trustee for life. So, I commend you both. You'll be missed. I'm pleased with Mark Hamill to get to know him and Dawn and Dawn Rattan and enjoy Coaston, Dr. Coaston. So, we have some interesting people coming on, but you'll be missed. And I, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, it's, you know, the new guide to this equation and sitting at this table to have trustees that I know that I can count on, that we can count on as a college, as a community for our students, for our faculty and staff, for our leadership team and for the broader community we serve. You have been faithful stewards. You have been kind and compassionate and encouraging to me and provided me with the support and encouragement that I need as your president to do my best to lead from an employee standpoint, this college. And so, Paul, when we would meet and we'd work through things, you were also always very thoughtful and deliberate and would ask good questions. And I appreciate that greatly. And Dr. Cook, you know, when I started in the search process, you were the chair. And it was interesting, just a quick side note, as a candidate to go from, hold on a second, everything was initially directed to Dr. Cook and now who's this Greg Musial guy?
You're not the first.
He's a regular guy out here. Anyways, I just, I appreciated the encouragement, the conversations that we've had, the guidance you've given me as president here has been incredibly valuable and greatly appreciated. And to both of you, we will miss, I will miss our regular contact and the work that we do together and know the work that you will continue to do for our community and the advocates that you'll be for this college. And so, thank you very much for your service. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jerry, I know you're not a big fan of this, but Paul eats it up.
You have to stay for the end of the meeting. That's part of the, yeah, we need the quorum. Now, thank you very much for your service. And I know that there are a lot of people at the reception at four o'clock that shared that with you, faculty, staff and members of the community who sometimes don't appreciate us until you're not going to be there. And then all of a sudden, they recognize that it's been a great thing to have you there and it has given them confidence and comfort.
He's talking about me.
And what's going on at the college. So, okay. The next item on the agenda is awards and recognition. And Dr. Bound, you're going to introduce our student spotlight. First of all, I want to, I do want to recognize that Mark Hamill and Dawn Rattan are in the audience and they're, they are trustees-elect who will officially take office at our January 20th meeting. So, I want to recognize them. And then we have awards and recognition and we have another student who's going to share with us.
All right. Daniel, would you like to come up? And Daniel Gonzalez is a student at Blue Valley Northwest. And we're just so excited to have you with us. This is, not to take any of his thunder, but we try to bring to you as trustees and to our community a chance to meet students that bring a different experience. And today, you're going to hear another one of those examples. So, Daniel, we are so pleased to have you with us. So, it's all yours.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Daniel Gonzalez. I would like to thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to be your student spotlight tonight. I'm a full-time student here at Johnson County Community College and I'm also a junior at Blue Valley Northwest High School. I participate in a dual-degree program with the Blue Valley School District and JCCC. I just completed my first semester here at JCCC recently. Currently through the dual-degree program, I'm working toward earning a high school degree, an associate degree and a cybersecurity certificate in 2023. Here with me today is Ms. Barron, who serves as the liaison between JCCC and Blue Valley. She's one of the reasons I get to be in this program. And she has been a really great support and resource for the students being in the dual-degree program through Blue Valley and JCCC. My motivation to participate in the dual-degree program was my particular interest in JCCC's cybersecurity program. As you know, the cybersecurity program has been designated by the National Security Agency and Department of Homeland Security as the National Center of Academic Excellence in Cyber Defense Education. This is a really impressive credential that Johnson County Community College has obtained. And I feel really lucky to work towards my goals at an institution that holds really impressive credentials like this. My career, my career goal is to eventually obtain a computer science degree and contribute to international cyber policy development, which is inspired by my years of living abroad in Europe and Africa. Due to my parents' jobs, I have had the opportunity to live abroad in Africa for two years and Poland for two years. I'm very grateful for the support that JCCC provides that is helping students like me work towards our goals. I'm fortunate to have been able to participate in several clubs and organizations here at JCCC that are helping me to develop my skills and gain exposure to my areas of interest, including MALE UN, being a vice chair on the Budget Committee and Student Senate and the Cybersecurity Club. The supportive professors, student resource centers and extracurricular opportunities for students have made my experience at JCCC a positive one. I'm looking forward to continuing to participate at JCCC. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. I took some from up front. If you want to come on up here in front, you could come on up here and take them, but I've got one with you in it. So, if somebody back there will give you my email address at JCCC and you can have that one. Daniel, we always have some questions for our student, but I promised you they would be softballs. Dr. Cook and then Trustee Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Daniel, what a great experience you've had up to this point. Not many people can travel the way you have and have the experiences you have. So, my question really isn't a softball question. I think it's a pretty hard question. What do you think is the number one threat in cybersecurity today?
Well, there's a lot of threats going on in cybersecurity. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but there's a recent threat in cybersecurity with the, I don't know if you're aware of this, with Log 4j. And I really think, and it's really surprised the amount of people, and I think just ready, preparedness for these zero-day attacks or attacks that these people are unknown for and having that availability to be ready for those and be able to counter those immediately and have measures is one of the biggest threats that the cybersecurity industry is facing.
Well, I congratulate you and I wish you the very best. You represent yourself very, very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy?
I would also say you represent yourself extremely well. We're glad to have you. Alitha, or excuse me, Blue Valley Schools are highly regarded, so we appreciate your being here for sure. My question has more to do with cybersecurity and how did you, how did you choose cybersecurity?
Well, I'm always really interested in cybersecurity and all computers. And I've seen how it affects our world and how it's increasingly becoming more of an issue in our daily lives. And I really want to get into the industry and I think it's very exciting. It has a lot of opportunity for me.
Well, this is one of the greatest parts of our meeting is having students come forward and tell us a little bit about themselves. And there are unique paths to Johnson County Community College, so welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Trustee Snyder?
Thank you for being here. So, clarify for me, are you taking classes here on campus or doing everything through your?
I'm a full-time student here at JCCC.
Okay. And so, how are you balancing that with, how do you balance everything? I guess I'll just leave it at that.
Well, I don't get a lot of sleep. I don't know, I just got to stay up on my schoolwork. You know, it's really just working, working hard. You know, you have to have a good work ethic and you just have to be really passionate about what you're doing. I think.
Well, very impressive. Keep it up.
Thank you.
I bore my wife anyway, because I'm not sure this board listens, about all the international news I've listened to. I mean, what role do you think cybersecurity has with Xi Jinping and his administration?
Well, I know they're very forward on their cybersecurity initiatives. I think they're, I think they're one of the biggest, biggest kind of competitors that the US faces inside the cybersecurity world. I think we need to be aware of them and the threat that they face.
Why would it be bad, from China's perspective, if IPOs are offered in the United States?
Could you please define IPO for me?
Well, I think it's been interesting to watch the initial public offering. So, as Chinese companies go to the US or Western markets to offer their stock, that China has panicked about the data for their consumers that have been available to the Western world. So, I think Xi has, you may not know anything about it, I'm just asking, do you have any perspective? Because it's not every day I get to ask him to do this.
Well, I also know that the Chinese collect data on the US people. And I think, I think it's just an interesting, I think, I think what you're talking about is a really interesting topic and has a lot of interesting facets to it that I think are definitely of big interest for the United States right now.
I agree. And I commend you for what you're doing. I really do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Daniel, I'm interested in your, in your African experience. Just met David in our, he was an international student that was at the reception from Eldoret, Kenya, where my daughter spent three months at a children's hospital. So, where were you in Africa? What were your experiences?
Well, I was living, with my time in Africa, I was living in South Africa in Johannesburg. And well, it was a very different place and it was very lively. I really enjoyed it and it was a lot of fun. And it got to open my eyes to different people, different cultures and different, just different, a lot of different experiences that I have been able to experience and look at things differently.
Well, there are lots of connections here behind you. Kate Allen was the executive director of the Blue Valley Educational Foundation for a number of years. So, she helped raise money to fund a lot of things in Blue Valley. Ms. Barron, are you at Blue Valley or are you here?
I'm, both, both.
Both, okay.
But mostly Blue Valley.
And mostly it's skis up for Blue Valley Northwest, right?
Wow!
So, yeah. Both my daughters went there. Daniel, thank you again for being here. I'm not, without disparaging anybody else in the room, when you leave the room, the average IQ will drop. Dr. Bound, do you have any closing?
Well, just, just a couple of things. You know, I was reminded of the fact that Daniel's a full-time student in addition to being a high school student. And we were going through the census data that we have to authorize before it goes officially to the Kansas Board of Regents. And a statistic jumped out at me as you were talking, reflecting on the data shared this morning. We have 330 approximately, I think that's the right number, 330 students who are high school students, who are full-time college students at Johnson County Community College. That's a significant number. That frankly surprised me. And so, you are a representative of a number of students. And as you said, has been said here many times, you've done a fantastic job of that. You brought up the zero-day cyber threats. And I want to give a shout out to RIS team. They were all over that. And I got an email the day after. I just, cyber attacks are a very real thing. And we are incredibly fortunate to have a great team here. And I won't belabor it, but when you brought that up, it gave me the perfect chance to do a shout out to RIS team. So, Daniel, thank you so much for being with us. Ms. Barron, thank you so much for being with us and supporting our students together. And enjoy some downtime. Congratulations.
Best wishes. The next item on our agenda is the open forum. The open forum period is a period during every regularly scheduled board meeting when citizens can address the board on issues involving the college. Traditionally, we allow five minutes per speaker unless there are a large number of speakers, in which case the chair has a discretion to limit it to three minutes. During the, any presentations, the speakers are asked to remain at the podium and to be respectful and civil and to address any specific personnel or student issues to the appropriate person within the college. We have no speaker signed up for tonight's meeting for the open forum period. I'll remind everybody that while we are, while we are doing both hybrid meetings with both Zoom and in-person, if you wish to participate by Zoom, you need to sign up by 5:00 PM the day before so that you can receive your own secure Zoom link. You can also sign up in-person up until 4:45 PM before our meeting right outside the board chamber. So, that option will continue to be available for every regularly scheduled board meeting. That takes us to board reports. Our Student Senate President is wisely gone from campus after finals. So, Shelby will not be making a report today on Student Senate. And Dr. Bound, I don't know if you're going to talk about JCC days of giving.
I'm going to, yep.
Okay. But certainly the students have done, Student Senate has done a great job in that. I will leave that to you then. I just didn't want to go by without saying anything about it. Our college lobbyist, Dick Carter, is not with us today, but you all received his report prior to the meeting. If there are any questions about that, you can either address them to Mr. Carter or we can try to address them now with Kate and Dr. Bound. Any questions about Mr. Carter's written report?
The Chiefs play tonight?
Chiefs play tonight. Kickoff is at 5:20 PM. In Los Angeles, yeah. Yes, the Chiefs play tonight.
Wondering where everybody was at.
The next item is the Faculty Association. That wasn't a signal, Jim. Dr. Jim Liker, our Faculty Association President.
Well, I hope you'll find my comments tonight in keeping with the spirit of the season, starting with hearty thanks to my colleague Andrea View for her report last month. Faculty Association is fortunate to have officers like her, people of whom I'm as proud as I'm sure Dr. Bound is of his cabinet. Looking ahead to my last semester as FA president, you'll hear more from her and others as we transition to new leadership. Among other things, Dr. View delivered an apt summation of the challenges faced by students and employees in the pandemic's continuing wake. You've already heard about the college's commitment to improved mental health resources, so I won't belabor that. I will mention that we're far from alone. According to a study published by Inside Higher Ed earlier this week, community colleges have shed more than 11% of their workforce since fall 2019, most of that falling disproportionately on part-time workers. I've seen this personally in the refrains of colleagues, some full-time, but most of them adjuncts, who have simply decided it's time to bring their teaching careers to a close. And we're all seeing it in the students, though we're seeing it through lower completion rates, mostly caused by life intruding on school kinds of issues. Nonetheless, grades were submitted on Tuesday. Most teaching faculty have already begun their preps for next semester and a few started this week on the winter session. So, we are persevering. I invite all of you, new trustees as well, to the sabbatical presentations, which will be held on Zoom for Tuesday afternoon of January 11th. Presenters will come from the disciplines of fine arts, art history, graphic design, English and mathematics. I'll send an email reminder about this. As you recall, sabbatical reports used to be delivered to the Learning Quality Committee in which trustees could ask questions directly. Since that opportunity was lost in the Committee of the Whole Structure, FA has been collaborating with faculty development, particularly Farrell Janov, who's here tonight, to find ways to get that interaction back. We are tentatively exploring the possibility of a reception in the collab on January 20th prior to your next meeting. I'll keep you up to date on details and ask that you consider attending both days. Sabbaticals are a sizable investment. It serves all our interests for you to understand what that investment buys in terms of professional I'm going to focus for a few minutes on work being done by individual faculty related to community outreach and diversity initiatives. Recently, Professor Perla Weaver from Computer Science was part of a collaborative presentation titled Latinos Go to College at the Virtual Summit on Access, Persistence and Completion for Underrepresented Students. The summit's goal is to provide opportunities to discuss best practices that support recruitment and retention of students of color in Kansas and Missouri. My fellow historian, Ty Edwards, through her program, the Kansas Studies Institute, is one of several metro area partners in the Redlining Project sponsored by the Johnson County Museum. The term redlining, of course, refers to discriminatory practices resulting in racial segregation, the history of which will be highlighted by the museum's exhibit commencing in January. I'm glad to say one of my former students, Ryan Pritchard, who is now earning a master's degree at UMKC, is one of the team members working on that exhibit. As part of the partnership, Kansas Studies has hosted two past-as-prologue events this fall, one on Reverend Thomas Johnson, the county and college's namesake, and another on the Wyandotte Nation in Kansas. As a plug for the Journal of Kansas History, on whose editorial board I serve, an article on the Redlining Project is scheduled to appear in our Summer 2022 issue. Some of you may have caught the November KCUR story on the work being done, also with Johnson County Museum, by our fashion merchandising and design department. Professor Britt Benjamin is among the faculty leading a student effort to exhibit a 1950's fashion collection donated by the family of Mary Ellen Rixey. On December 1st, several FA members, among them Amanda Glass from Chemistry and our Uniserv rep, attended a racial and social justice forum sponsored by the KNEA. This forum will meet monthly through April to explore topics like implicit bias and immigration reform. And from there, hopefully create a core group of facilitators who can hold similar trainings here at JCCC. And I'll give a shout out to my own African-American studies class this semester, who met at 18th and Vine on November 22nd to tour the Black Archives of Mid-America. My friend and former co-instructor, Carmelaetta Williams, serves as the director there. And she treated us to a delightful tour of the facility, which has been transformed into a first-class museum of the African-American experience in Kansas City. Mr. Carter's not here tonight, but if I can usurp some of his role, if the early signs about the direction of political winds in the state are accurate, it's likely that DEI initiatives will be on the defensive in 2022. I raise these examples partly to gloat, but also I want to make a point that whatever the level of commitment by the board, administration or legislature, faculty will continue to champion diversity efforts in our own classes and in our own way, as we always have. That will stay the case as long as academic freedom remains a staple of higher education. Professors are semi-public figures. We live in the shadow of sites like Rate My Professor or with the possibility that our worst-delivered lecture ends up on YouTube, courtesy of a student and their camera. But once in a while, social media does us a solid. One such instance happened last week when an interesting post appeared on Facebook. I'd like to quote generously from the student who wrote it. "I just successfully completed college algebra. So, very many years of fearing this monster, and I actually did it. It's not the Boston Marathon or the Iron Man Triathlon or any other superhuman goal, but it's what this feels like for me. I can't thank this lady enough for her generosity, expertise and time she spent with me over the last four months. She was my coach, my tutor, my savior. Her recorded lecture videos and one-on-one tutoring sessions made all the difference in the world in my understanding of the material and helping me to succeed. She talked me down off the ledge in a tearful 9:30 PM Zoom call and had me smiling by the end." Seriously, who does that? "My biggest takeaway from my four months in algebra this time around is that it's likely not that you're not smart enough to do it. You just needed to have the right teacher who could explain it to you in a way you understand. I hope my little story encourages someone else to dig deep and have the courage to finally confront something that has secretly terrified you and/or made you convince yourself that you were less than." End of quote. "I don't know about you, but I can relate to this student's story as..." I don't know about you, but I can relate to this student's story, especially the secretly terrified part. And at the risk of getting too personal, I have an occasional dream, all right, nightmare, that way back in 1983, I failed college algebra, which means I never completed the bachelor's degree, which means the PhD I earned after that was a fraud, which means I therefore owe the college 20 years of back salary. Although this was a public post, I'm not going to identify the student, but with her permission to do so, I will out the professor here as Rhonda Barlow. Rhonda's dedication and that of the entire math department to student success is obvious, not only in the heroic gestures we see in the classroom and tend to put on display, but in the less glamorous behind-the-scenes work of writing curriculum, developing good testing practices, assessing remedial performance, scheduling dozens of instructors for hundreds of classes, deciding on delivery methods, staying current in the field, and a thousand other tasks that happen before the student ever enrolls. That's the work we need you to support in the difficult year ahead. Tonight is my last report for two of you. Trustee Snyder, thank you for your service these last few years, especially your commitment to our sustainability work and for the way you maintained your integrity in the election. Trustee Cook, we've had our disagreements, but I think you know me to be someone who doesn't give false praise. So believe me when I say I mean this in the most complimentary way possible, you are a true gentleman and a first-rate educator in your own right. I know this because I've learned a few things by observing you. I will stand for the usual grilling, as Chair Musil put it last month.
Anybody like to put him on the griddle? Dr. Cook?
Thank you, Dr. Leicher, for being here. And we have more in common than you think we have. I was an 18-year-old, and I got a D in Humanities, so I had a lot of fear. I was more interested in my classmates than I was in Baroque Architecture.
We had a lot in common, yes. But Humanities wasn't my D's.
We should never fear differences of opinion. We should fear our inability to resolve them. I think we've resolved them, maybe not always to each other's best liking. I've always appreciated somebody who's passionate for what they represent, and you've always been passionate as the Faculty Association president and leader of the Faculty Association. And so I applaud you, and I thank you for your kind remarks, and I wish you the very, very best.
Same to you, Chair.
Other questions? I would like, on the sabbaticals for January 11th, the reminder email would be great, but if we could have a schedule.
I'll provide that, too.
With the topics, I mean, some of us may not be able to attend all of them, and those will be available after January 11th as well in some format, right?
They will.
And then the Kansas Studies Seminar, the two that have already been on with Reverend Johnson and the other one, and the Wyandotte Nation, are those available somewhere?
Yes, those are also, check the Kansas Studies Institute website on the college's website.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Enjoy the break, such as it is. I know nobody just stops everything, but we'll lock you out of the buildings for about a week, I guess. Everybody goes home, so enjoy that. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
The next report is Johnson County Education Research Triangle, trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, trustee Chair Musil. We did not meet in November. The next board meeting for the Johnson County Education Research Triangle will be April 27th, 2022. I think this is the third time we'll try to meet at K-State Alatha. We've been remote the last several meetings. I will report that Mayor Peggy Dunn did send around a monthly report. Revenues are up to 1.482 million in November of '21, up 11.7% from last year. So that's good. In fact, we're already ahead of the year for all of last year, and even ahead of where we were in 2019, '18, and '17. So we're at 18, almost 19 million for the year in total revenue, J-Cert, and tax, you always say it better than I do, that the county and different political entities decided to do to promote different research and development in the county. So I will meet again in April, and that concludes my report. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Questions for trustee Cross? The next report is from the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, President Ingram.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We did have a quarterly meeting, the first part of December, December 3rd and 4th. We met in person and in hybrid. We were at Pratt Community College, and all colleges were in attendance except for Garden City Community College. On Friday, we heard from Regent John Rolfe about his role as vice chairperson of the Kansas Board of Regents and his role as a member of Spark, which, if everyone will remember, that's strengthening people and revitalizing Kansas. He serves on that committee. Regent Rolfe participated in an open dialogue and answered questions about transfer and articulation and service areas. And basically, we had a really good conversation with him. It was nice to have one of the Board of Regents there. He asked for consistent and constant communication to help advance the higher education system. We also participated in training on good boardsmanship and governance. The role of the Board of Trustees versus the role of the president and their staff was stressed. The board's role is policy, and the president's role is to make sure the board's goals are realized and policies are followed. On Saturday morning, we did vote on KACCt officers for the next year. I will continue to serve as president. Vice president is Arlen Leicher from Colby. Secretary is Dennis Peters from Neosho, and treasurer is David Marshall from Hutch. And our past president is Michelle Hamm from Pratt. We still have Mike Johnson from Barton County Community College, serving on TEA. We also heard from trustees who attended the ACCT National Convention and what they learned. These are just packed meetings, you know, for those trustees who are able to attend virtually, maybe not in person, but certainly virtually. We plan to continue that at this point. But I want to focus on a number of guests that we had and speakers that morning. Georgia Masterson, who is the wife of John Masterson, who is the president at Allen County Community College, provided participants training related to socioeconomic diversity and the hidden rules of the upper, middle, and lower class. Applying this learning to our financial aid offices, our recruitment and admissions staff's work, and college policies were discussed. It was a really good, good time there. Really very informative. Heather Morgan provided an update on the federal Build Back Better legislation and alerted the group that free community college has been removed, which will avoid some of the problems that would have been caused in our state. Representative Stephen Johnson from Assyria discussed the upcoming legislative session with the group via Zoom. He discussed potential changes related to capers and some efforts to lowering the waiting time to return to work after retirement. Dan Murray from Divine Donnelian Murray and Heather Morgan, both lobbyists, discuss specific issues that community colleges will face in the upcoming session and the KACCt legislative agenda. There will be a trailer bill to adjust the Kansas Promise Act. Kbor is proposing a voluntary affiliation bill, Kbor's early retirement changes, the community college budget request, and budget maintenance of effort funds. Heather encouraged all colleges to hold a legislative breakfast, lunch, coffee before the session with their local legislators, and for trustees to be involved and advocate for community college needs. She invited trustees to ask her to participate in any of their meetings, to give briefings at any time, either in person or Zoom. Our next meeting will be the annual PTK Student Awards Banquet on April 1st. That will take place in Junction City, Kansas. And we did adjourn Saturday morning at 11:30. So that concludes that part of my report. I would like to add some additional information. I was at Kbor yesterday and again this morning in Topeka. And I wanted to basically just bring three things to everyone's attention. The first is that KU announced they have changed their qualified admissions. They will be requiring a 2.0 GPA and 21 ACT, or a 3.4 GPA and no test score. So I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. Late yesterday, the Board of Regents voted to pull affiliation and mergers and the Promise Act trailer from their legislative priorities. And thirdly, this morning, oh, I want to share one other thing. It's actually three plus one. We had the state director of the Small Business Development Center in Topeka speak yesterday, Greg Jordan. And he talked about, in particular, a call center that they now have, which is operating 24/7 in both English and Spanish. So that was really exciting news. He said in 2020, 15 jobs were saved or created every day. So the impact of what the Small Business Development Center is doing and small business development centers across the state is really marvelous. He presented a lot of positive stats, and he said these are not estimates. These are recorded. So he also mentioned the different areas where we have small business development centers, and certainly seeing JCCC and having that mentioned was really exciting. So thank you for the work that's done here locally. The last thing we did today at O'Malley from the Kansas Leadership Center led a discussion on team dynamics. And, you know, just really in general, without getting into the weeds of everything, they really talked about just more of the how and not the why we can't do something, and how, you know, coming out of the pandemic, that was going to be really important for the Board of Regents to begin to have those conversations. And it was fascinating to listen to their dialogue. And then he talked about just there being a gap in our messaging as far as higher ed and what we actually do for the state and what we provide, and how important, you know, people want lower taxes, they want good K-12, they want Rose, they want entitlements, capers. And higher ed sometimes gets lost in that conversation. So I think we'll look forward to hearing more from them about how we are messaging not only community colleges, but just higher education in the state of Kansas and what we do to provide a future for our students. So thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Trustee Ingram, the second one you had was something pulled from the legislative agenda, the Promise Act trailer bill?
Yes. They voted to pull affiliation and mergers and the Promise Act trailer as part of their priorities.
What does that mean? Thank you for the question.
So that they're no longer in the Kbor legislative priorities for this session?
Exactly. Exactly.
Okay. I guess I can understand the, what was the rationale? I understand getting rid of the affiliation and consolidation because that's got a lot of controversy. Why not the promise bill?
And I will have to get back to you on that. I don't know. I left because of the weather, and so this was voted on after I left, but Heather made, you know, made sure that I understood that those two had been pulled from the priorities. And we just did not have a chance to talk further about that. But I don't, did anyone else listen to the Kbor meeting or have information? So I'll have to get back to you on clarification, and I apologize.
Other questions for Nancy? Paul?
I just want to congratulate Nancy for being selected for another chair of leadership. That's tremendous. You've put so much work into that, and it's nice to see your colleagues recognize that.
Well, I appreciate that very much. It's really been something that I have enjoyed, but it just allows the opportunity to really advocate. And I think just being there, I said that at the last meeting, I think just being there, being seen, and them understanding that we're a part of all of these discussions. We just need to be participating.
Great.
So, thank you.
I'll follow up on that with, there was a time when I started shortly before I was on the board where Johnson County Community College was not active in the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. My predecessor, Lynn Mitchellson, started to change that and helped turn it around, and then trustee Cook became fully engaged and served as president of the organization. I think this will be your third year as president, which is some type of record, I think.
I'm not looking for record. I think it had more to do with the fact that, you know, it's been through a pandemic, and we had a new executive director. I mean, there's just a lot of things that contributed to that. But it's a good group of people and people that really care earnestly about their community colleges, so.
Your modesty will not stop us from bragging that we've had a three-year president from Johnson County Community College. Trustee Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a lot of staff at various levels, we've talked about this before, that are aligned with Kbor. But for trustee Ingram to take her own time at her own expense to go and observe and listen is really commendable. I thank you for doing that, Nancy. And she, it's always good to have the presence there, because while she's not on the agenda to speak or report or present, her attendance does not go unnoticed by the Regents. And so thank you, Nancy, for doing that.
Well, you're welcome. May I clarify, I am reimbursed for my mileage. So just my time, I'm grateful to provide, but.
And I, my last question would be, you mentioned that KU has changed its qualified admissions to a 2.0 GPA in high school, or a 21 comprehensive score on the ACT, or a 3.4 and no ACT. Do you know what they were before? Do you remember what they were before? Is that a, is that a type? Is that harder to get into KU?
I understand it to be easier.
Okay. I see lots of head nodding.
It's easier to get in now. I think it was a 3.0. It wasn't 3.4, it was a 3.0, I thought.
I thought they said 3.4. I clarified that, but maybe, and I think it had to do with the waiting.
It's whether or not you have the exam or not. If you have the exam, then you can have a lower GPA and a 21, or you can have the higher GPA and you don't need to test at all. So they're attempting to get on board with getting rid of ACT.
It had been higher.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy, for, again, for your time and for that report.
You are welcome.
The next item on the agenda then is trustee Snyder on foundation.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. As a reminder to all of my colleagues here, we are all welcome to submit recommendations for new foundation board members. You all received both electronic and mailed communications about that in the forums, so those can be submitted for recommendations for fiscal year '23. And the Foundation's Board Development Committee chaired by Sue Parker will meet in January to start reviewing those recommendations for consideration. The next foundation board of directors meeting will be on January 26th of next year. I want to provide a couple highlights, giving highlights. Recently, Giving Tuesday, foundation donors contributed more than $3,000 to the college's Basic Needs Center. Those contributions will be used to purchase food for the Cav Cupboard Food Pantry. So thank you for everyone that made a Giving Tuesday gift. I also want to recognize five new scholarships that have been established through the foundation. The Karen and Stephen Clegg Scholarship, the Cow Family Foundation Scholarship, the Dennis and Stephanie Moore Scholarship, the Catherine and Robert Sint Scholarship, and the Institute of International Auditors KC Chapter Scholarship. Thank you to all those families and those that helped establish those new opportunities for our students. I'd also like to thank trustee Cross, who served with me this year as a liaison to the foundation. I'm the one that provided the reports, I think, every meeting, I think. But trustee Cross went to all the meetings with me and provided input. In closing, on behalf of the foundation, I'd like to conclude my report by thanking all the trustees, as well as the entire community, for their continued commitment to the foundation and the generosity in 2021. As we continue to navigate uncertain times in 2021, the foundation donors contributed more than $2.5 million to support student scholarships and countless other college programs and initiatives, and that is certainly an impressive number. So thank you to all the donors, and a quick reminder that year-end gifts need to be postmarked or made online by December 31st to be credited to 2021 Giving. And if you have questions, talk to Rob or someone else in the foundation office. Thank you.
Questions for trustee Snyder? Thank you, Paul, for the foundation report. Committee reports and recommendation, collegial steering this month, I did find and keep my notes. We held a committee meeting last week, December 9th, I guess a week ago today. Talked about a number of topics. We did not have an agenda, which led to a free-ranging conversation. We talked about the history of the college and the fact that the college did a hard-bound history of the college for our 30th anniversary, and we've done nothing since, so we're 20 years behind in a formal history of the college, and maybe it's time to look into that effort. We did, had a slight discussion about the wayfinding update, the signage on campus, which was part of the facilities master plan. Dr. Leicher and the faculty talked about when grades were due and what the schedule was for the faculty between finals week and the end of the semester for the faculty. We talked about, a lot about COVID protocols on campus, the issues with respect to the mandatory vaccine regulation, the impact of the preliminary injunction on that by federal courts, how, when, and why it would apply to a community college. We talked a little bit about the vaccine incentive program that we had at the college for college employees, and the plan for COVID protocols to stay in place as they are heading into the spring semester. The numbers, a little bit about the numbers on COVID throughout the county. And finally, we talked a little bit about winter session and that process, the fact, I think it's 80% full as of December 9th. I assume it's a little fuller than that now. But to get information about the winterum session where people can take basically a three-hour class in three weeks?
Four weeks.
Four weeks. So it was another good discussion among the faculty, the administration, and... So, it was another good discussion among the faculty, the administration, and Trustee Snyder and myself. Anything to add, Paul?
I do not. You did an excellent job.
Thank you. Let's see. Next item is the Committee of the Whole, and I really appreciate Trustee Snyder agreeing to run through all of the recommendations we have from our Committee of the Whole.
Well, thank you, and we do not have as many recommendations as Trustee Cross was burdened with last month. We'll try and get through this a little more efficiently. The Committee of the Whole met via Zoom on Monday, November 29th at 8:30. Trustee Ingram was absent, but the rest of the board was present. First, we received an update from Chester Moyer and Corey Robinson, the college's auditors at Rubin Brown. In 2021, the college's total federal award expenditures were over $40.5 million. Mr. Moyer also updated the Committee on upcoming GASB accounting pronouncements that will impact the college. The college did receive an unmodified opinion, so congratulations to Rachel Leers and her finance team. I move the board accept the recommendation of the college administration to accept the audits of the financial statements in major federal award programs for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021.
It moved, I hear, second. Seconded, moved by Trustee Snyder and seconded by Trustee Ingram that we accept the recommendation and accept the audits of financial statements in major federal award programs for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2021. Are there any questions or is there any discussion? Again, we received an unmodified opinion and importantly, a note from the auditor that there was great cooperation with the employees of the college, which is always my number one test, about whether anybody's trying to hide anything. And nobody is, nobody was, and they found that. So, all those in favor of accepting the audit, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries 7-0.
Six-0.
Unless you get the votes. Six-0. I added, I added Trustee Smith Everett, who is here, to get back to seven, but we're actually back to six. Six-0.
Very good. The next major discussion topic at the committee was about student surveys. We received an update on student engagement surveys from our institutional research office. The total number of survey responses was down a little bit due to COVID challenges, but overall, many of our responses were comparable to other large colleges. Important focus areas for our students include safety and security, registration effectiveness, instructional effectiveness, academic advising and counseling, admissions, and financial aid, so that makes sense from a college student perspective for sure. Importantly, our students have a strong sense of belonging on campus, and that certainly ties into some of our strategic plan initiatives. Next, Rachel Leers, our Chief Financial Officer, presented preliminary budget guidelines and a budget calendar. Both are similar to past guidelines, but there is some question about what our tuition rates might be proposed for next year. Those proposals will be reviewed in the spring. I move the board accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the preliminary guidelines for development of the college's fiscal year 2022-2023 budget.
Second?
Been moved by Trustee Snyder and seconded by Trustee Smith Everett to accept the recommendation of college administration regarding the preliminary guidelines for development of the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. Any discussion or questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Cross?
So, if we keep the, if the assessed valuation's at 4%, the college mill levy rate will remain flat at 9.11 mills, exceeds the revenue neutral rate, an estimated tax delinquency rate of 2.0, 2% will be used. That means we then need to mail everyone and tell them that we're raising, the mill revenue's going up.
The county, every taxing authority lets the county know if they're going to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Revenue neutral rate being the same amount of dollars and cents that you raised the year before, meaning if appraised values go up, you have to roll your mill levy back to get to the same amount of dollars as last year. Those are, the taxing authorities identify or notify the county. The county clerk then sends that out to every affected taxing jurisdiction, every taxpayer. And I don't envy that task because each taxpayer's are in different groups at all times, and I suspect maybe they'll send it out and say, enlist everybody that's going to exceed the revenue neutral rate, even if I'm not in Fire District Number Two. But we don't have to do that, the county has to do that.
County will do it.
But I, I'm not sure if it's been determined who, if we pay a proportionate share of the mailing costs. That was at one time a discussion, that individual taxing jurisdictions would pay the county some amount. So, I don't think that's been resolved.
That's part of my question. Do we pay for that?
We'll find out.
I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just, we don't know is the answer, right? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Moving on, the Committee of the-
We have to approve, Lee.
Oh, you didn't vote yet?
We didn't vote yet.
Come on, let's get to it.
No. I do, I do want to mention again, because the last time, well, I am recommending, and I know the administration's going to report back to us in February, but I believe it's time to raise our tuition rates after raising them $1 in the last seven years, that it is time to raise our tuition rates to relieve the pressure on property taxpayers who now pay 67% of the budget, and will pay more than that next year if we don't obtain additional tuition. I think the scholarship numbers that we are giving out is up to $1.7 million a year now. Pell grants are going to be increased, and there are other funds out there. I do not think a tuition increase is unreasonable or will deter students from coming to Johnson County Community College. I want to continue to make my position clear. Trustee Cook and then Trustee-
Mr. Chair, with all due respect, both of that comment and I think Trustee Cross's comments will have ample time when you discuss this. They really aren't related to our adoption of the calendar. Those are items on the calendar, so I would call for the motion to approve the budget calendar.
Well, then we have to debate if you're going to call the question, so I'll just let Trustee Cross finish, and then we can vote on adopting the guidelines. I'm not opposing the guidelines now, I want to make it clear that I don't want anybody surprised.
Same, and I just, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to respond. I think I said this at the Committee of the Whole, and perhaps being at my political zenith, I don't mind saying, I think it's good we're going to keep revenues flat. I would prefer to see frankly that we raise more revenue if we're going to go and raise tuition fees on students. I don't disagree, I concur in part and I dissent in part. I think it is time perhaps that we look at raising tuition fees, but I think we have the lowest mill rate in the state, and we catch flak for it. So, I think if we're going to raise it on students, we ought to look at raising it on the county, on the property taxpayers, who've never really objected to anything we've asked them for. So, we've been good stewards. I just thank you for the chance to respond, and I agree with Trustee Cook, we can move on.
The only thing I would indicate is our revenues will not be flat if we keep the mill levy the same. They will be $4 to $5 million higher from property taxpayers than they would be if we rolled the mill levy.
Why do we need to raise tuition and fees?
Call to order.
I will, we will address all these issues as we go forward. I simply wanted to alert people to make sure they knew where I was, so that nobody claimed surprise later, public or otherwise. All those in favor of accepting the budget guidelines as presented at the Committee of the Whole, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
We have six purchasing proposals to review. The first is for John A. Marshall for furniture. This is a single-source purchase proposal with pricing through a cooperative purchasing agreement. I move the board accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the single-source justification for a furniture purchases in FY '22 to John A. Marshall for an estimated amount of $270,000.
Second?
Been moved by Trustee Snyder and seconded by Trustee Cross to approve the single-source proposal from John A. Marshall. Any questions or discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
Next is also for furniture through Scott Rice. This, too, is a single-source purchase proposal with pricing through a purchasing, a cooperative purchasing agreement. I move the board accept the nomination of the college administration to approve the single-source justification for furniture purchases in FY '22 to Scott Rice for an estimated amount of $200,000.
Second?
Moved by Trustee Snyder, seconded by Trustee Cook to approve the single-source purchase of furniture from Scott Rice. Any discussion? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Next is for Cone Inc. for elevator upgrades in the Midwest Trust Center. This is a single-source purchase proposal with pricing through a cooperative purchasing agreement. I move the board accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the single-source justification to Cone for elevator upgrades for $155,742.
Second?
Moved by Trustee Snyder and seconded by Trustee Cross to approve the single-source purchase of elevator upgrades from Cone?
Coney.
Coney, K-O-N-E. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries 6-0.
Next is for Spaces, again, for furniture. These furniture purchases are routine, but a good amount of these purchases are going toward the first-floor renovations in GEB. And I would just note for all of these, all of these were more thoroughly reviewed in our Committee of the Whole meeting that happened before this. This, too, for Spaces, is a single-source purchase proposal with pricing through a cooperative purchasing agreement. I move the board accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the single-source justification for furniture purchases in FY '22 to Spaces for an estimated amount of $150,000.
Second?
Moved by Trustee Snyder and seconded by Trustee Smith Everett to accept the bid, the single-source purchase from Spaces. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries 6-0.
Next, we have a traditional bid proposal for new doors and associated renovations at the gym. This proposal is for Complete Property Solutions, which had the low bid. I move the board accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid from Complete Property Solutions in the amount of $172,654.39 for gym door replacements on the JCC's main campus with an additional 10% contingency of $17,265,044.44 to allow for possible unforeseen cost for a total estimated expenditure of $189,919.83.
Second?
Moved by Trustee Snyder and seconded by Trustee Ingram to approve the low bid of Complete Property Solutions for the gym door replacements. Discussion or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That passes 6-0.
The last purchase proposal is for remodeling of the respiratory therapist space at the Alatha Health Education Center. This proposal is for GPS KC, which had the low bid. I move the board accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid from GPS KC in the amount of $286,474 for the OHC simulation room remodel with an additional 10% contingency of $26,847.40 to allow for possible unforeseen cost for a total estimated expenditure of $295,321.40.
Moved by Trustee Snyder, seconded by Trustee Ingram to approve the low bid to GPS KC for improvements to the Alatha Health Education Center's simulation room remodel. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries.
There will not be a Committee of the Whole meeting prior to the January board meeting. The next Committee of the Whole meeting is expected to occur on January 31st, 2022, and that concludes my report.
That is further evidence of why we're going to miss you, Paul. Very nicely done. Thank you. We're now ready for the Treasurer's Report, which is found at page 14 of the Board Packet. Trustee Cross, our Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Treasurer's Report is in the Board Packet, as stated by Trustee Chair Muzel. The Board Packet includes the Treasurer's Report for the month ended October 31st, 2021. Some items of note include, page one is the post, the general post-secondary technical education fund summary. October was the fourth month of the college's 2021-22 fiscal year. College's general fund unencumbered cash balance was $103 million as of October 31st, 2021. Expenditures, Mr. Chair, in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. It is the recommendation of this college administration, Mr. Chair, that the board trustees approve the Treasurer's Report, the month ended October 31st, 2021, subject to some audit.
Second?
Moved and seconded to accept the Treasurer's Report for the month ended October 31st, 2021, subject to audit. Any discussions or questions? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries 6-0. Monthly report to the board, Dr. Bound.
All right. Well, thank you very much again for the opportunity to share with you the good work that's happening in college. Just a couple of things as I work my way through the report. In front of you is a report for, or submission that we gave to the League for Innovation for reaffirmation, it's a beginning process, the reaffirmation as a board member college. We are one of 19 colleges that serve as a board member college. And to remind you that the work of the League for Innovation is really around innovation, around instruction, around, you know, fostering an environment across community colleges, participating in community colleges, that, you know, really ties into the innovative risk and return-based work. So, being willing to try new things and to push it out there and to find things that work to benefit our students and our community. As a new president, you're granted a kind of a one-year period, and then you're asked if you're interested in ongoing membership to, in essence, apply for that. And so, the first step is to provide a reaffirmation report, and it really speaks to our history of innovation at the college. And so, you have a copy of that for you, and that has been submitted to the other board members at the League. Assuming, well, I won't assume, if all goes well, from a board conversation standpoint, we'd have the opportunity for a site visit later this spring, and we're anticipating that somewhere in the months of March or April, that there would be a site visit here. And as that approaches, we'll begin kind of the prep work that it takes to host a site team. So, jumping into my report, if we may, I've got a few things that we're going to talk about. I'll talk about a couple of things and also have participation in this one as well. Before I get into the main agenda, though, I want to recognize our debate team. Under the coaches Justin Stanley and Matt Vega, our debate team, as I provide weekly updates to you, you hear about the good work of our outstanding debate team, and particularly brothers Thomas and Travis Babcock. They have been invited to the Rutgers Round Robin in January. That is prestigious intercollegiate debate competition. The likes of Harvard, Liberty, Emory, the University of Michigan, Texas, Berkeley, Dartmouth, Kansas, Minnesota, Kentucky, oh yeah, and Johnson County Community College. And I think that is significant recognition to our fantastic students and the great mentoring and coaching that they get from our coaches. So, I wanted to recognize them for that. In addition, you got to spend a little time with Daniel, sorry, Trustee Smith Everett, but just so you know, the, your fellow trustees held up your end of the bargain and asked all kinds of questions, including probably the toughest questions I've ever seen anybody ask, and handled them incredibly well. You can watch it later on.
I will. Just to double check.
All right. So, let's talk about kind of where we're at from an enrollment standpoint as we wrapped up the fall semester. We finished 1.8% down. We had been trending right about 2%, the eighth of, or the 2/10 of a percent gain probably is pretty closely tied to the winter session that began this week. And we're down about, we're down 3.5% in credit hours, you can see that there. Prior to this, we'd been trending a little bit higher than that. Again, as I've shared before, you know, we're off in terms of, from enrollment standpoint, more from a full-time student standpoint than a part-time student. We're down more in women than we are in men proportionally. You know, the good news is our associate and certificate paths are up, enrollment in those programs, and our non-degree enrollment is down. In having a discussion earlier today with our team, you know, the fact that we're down in non-degree students, other than the concurrent enrollment students, probably could mean that there are more students getting on a path, which is a good thing, or declaring a major program of study. All right. If we look at our continuing ed enrollment, if you look really closely, you will see that continuing ed exceeded their goal for this fall- fall enrollment. Eighteen students is eighteen students. And so, but they are up, and, you know, when you take that into consideration, they're a hundred and twenty percent of where they were at the end of fall, excuse me, at this point in time last year, and a hundred and thirteen percent over last year's total enrollment. If we look at spring, I just caution you, until we get back in January, these numbers move every day, and they move noticeable amounts every week. And so while we're off one percent headcount, a little bit less than that from a credit hour standpoint, I was told this morning that it's improved, improved a little bit, but again, let's take it one day at a time, and a lot of our teams are working hard. We are at a, you know, a time in the enrollment cycle, students are getting their grades, so they know, you know, many students will wait until they get their grades to, you know, in essence, click the mouse to register for spring semester. So I just, you know, it's going to move a lot in the next, even while we're shut down, it will move a lot. And then when we get back in January, it will, it will move rapidly again from an enrollment standpoint. So.
Dr. Bound, can I ask just for clarification? When we're, when we have these numbers in the blue boxes.
Yes.
Here on screen.
Yes.
Is that compared to last year or to nineteen?
That's compared to last year.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. The numbers you're going to see here are compared to, to last year. If we look at continuing ed, again, we're very early in the continuing ed cycle from an enrollment standpoint for spring, but you'll see that their goal is actually ahead of the last two years, and we are ahead of where we were, again, over the last two years for spring enrollment at this point in time. So that's from an enrollment standpoint. As you know, thanks to your input, and we have two of our incoming trustees here in the room with us, as has been referenced, we start the orientation process this next week, and we'll start with some of the basics, the role of trustee, some overview related to the college, a quick look at the hundred series policies. We're going to spend more time, as you know, as trustees, on that. And then we'll work our way through the college over the next six weeks after that, after we're back in January, across the college to give our trustees a good starting point. And so we appreciate your feedback and guidance as we do that. So also, we have, she was referenced a few minutes ago, Dr. Farrell Janab, she and Rachel Haynes have been leading the redesign of what has historically been known as professional development days. And, you know, as we launch each semester, we spend a week, or a good share of a week in professional development. And they came to me earlier in the fall and said, hey, could we think about doing some things differently related to that? And so I'd like to ask Farrell to come, and she's here now, and let's talk.
Thank you so much for having me. And my colleague and counterpart Rachel Haynes in staff development can't be here tonight, but our two offices, staff development and faculty development, work together on projects and programs throughout the year, most especially on what Dr. McLeod once referred to as the artist formerly known as P D D. We're revamping professional development days, and we're calling it professional learning days. So the reason for this, we, every year, every semester after what was P D D, we send out a survey. We get the feedback that it's too busy of a time of year, too many sessions offered, we can't see the things we want to see, we're getting ready for classes, this and that, student services are really, really busy getting students in classes. So we took that feedback and decided to have more intentional programming to address the needs of faculty and staff. And so for this first P L D, our folk, our theme, we're going to have a theme for each, for each week of these in-service days. The first theme is we're going to focus on strategic planning. So we'll have presentations on each of the strategy or each of the goals, and then we've brought in some key, we're going to bring in some keynote speakers to align with those strategic plan goals, and then also activities to engage and connect with others across campus, which I'll talk about a more, a little more in a minute. Oops, somebody did that for me. Thank you. So here's the, I'll just quickly go over the schedule for you. Professional learning day, spring two thousand and twenty-two, formerly known as P D D. We're going to have a four-day format, both semesters, fall and spring. So day one will always be Tuesday, and we'll start with a keynote speaker and the all-staff meeting on the, on day one. And our keynote speaker is Dr. Maria Harper Marinak. If you know her, she was at Maricopa for years. She's now an Aspen trustee, or a fellow and a great friend of J C C C. She's spoken here before, so we're excited about that. And then in between the keynote speaker and the all-staff, we'll have poster sessions where different groups around campus can showcase what they're, what they have to offer to students and staff, faculty. In the afternoon, as Dr. Leicher said, we've got the faculty sabbatical presentations, which you all are cordially invited to attend, listen in on, and/or they will be recorded, so you can, you can watch them later. Day two is the beloved all-staff breakfast. And we've lengthened it a little bit, so there's a little more time for everybody to be able to attend. And we picked it on a day that's not the day of last day to drop, when students are dropped for non-payment, so we hope students, more student services employees can attend that too. On that day, we'll also be having our presentations on the community partnership goal, and diversity, equity, and inclusion goal. And our D E I keynote speaker is Dr. Precious Porras. She is the vice president for diversity, equity, and inclusion at Dominican University, but she recently moved there from K U, and she's came highly recommended by a lot of our faculty members. And her comments are going to focus on how to incorporate D E I principles into all of our strategies, all four of our strategies, not just D E I as a standalone kind of thing. So we're excited about that. Okay, next one. Thursday, we've got, we'll have the, talk about employee engagement goals and the student success goals. We always have the all-faculty meeting on Thursday morning, budget kickoff on Thursday. Friday then is, Friday morning is always reserved for department and division meetings. Then we've got, concerning the employee engagement goal, we've got the keynote speaker, Judson Lately, who is known for his dance revolution. He was one of the first people to go viral. I'm not quite sure, I haven't quite got the whole thing, but he talks about change in organizations and how employees can adapt to change, and he's very motivational, apparently. And he also has offered to do some follow-up workshops with employees who want to participate in that. So he'll be speaking about that. And then we've got what our colleague in staff development, Susan Hoffman coined, I don't know if she coined the term, or she just heard it, Friye. So it's going to be for the Friday afternoon of P D D. And it's just going to be a time for, to connect and engage. We're going to have games, and we'll snacks and games and crafts and just sort of like stuff in the co-lab, and just a chance to kind of unwind. Because we feel like, you know, these last two years have been hard. We know that our students are struggling, and many of our staff and faculty are carrying a lot, too. And we really just wanted to create a calmer, gentler week of P D D, where there could be some time for reflection and renewal, and kind of get ready before the semester kicks into high gear. So that's the sort of the purpose of Friye. Coming up, though, the faculty and staff will not lose the opportunity to present for professional development opportunities. We're going to have something we're calling the professional learning series, and that will be where they can submit what they want to present when. We'll schedule it, we'll arrange it, we'll promote it. We'll have a special spot on Info Hub that'll be devoted strictly to professional learning, and where everybody can be a go-to place to see what's going on and see what's happening. And that way, we hope to spread professional development throughout the academic year, align it more strategically with, with what's going on in the year, and not just cramming it all on one week here and one week there. We do have plans for August, 2020 P L D. We've been working on, with Dr. Weber, Student Speaks, Dr. Kayne McClenley wrote the book Student Speaks about ten years ago, I think, which was focus groups of listening to students. And so we've done our first pilot focus group, and we're going to continue that throughout the spring. And she, we've invited her to be our keynote speaker for next fall. So we'll follow through on that. So in a nutshell, we are really, our goal is to foster a culture of learning, not just for students, but for all of our employees.
So is it a fair statement that faculty and staff don't consider this Thursday when there's a board meeting?
No.
Okay.
Well, I do.
I do, too. Yeah.
I knew somebody did.
Right answer.
You want to have questions?
Questions, and then I'll, I've got one more slide.
Any questions?
I'll just say, it sounds great. Thank you for your work.
We're excited about it. It feels like a good refresh.
It's going to be great.
I mean, I think we've been doing it the same way for decades, so.
Lovely.
Is it a fair statement to say that there, some things were, everything's zoomed or livestreamed, but is everything going to be recorded if it's not livestreamed?
This upcoming one, everything will be both, well, all of the main speakers will be both livestreamed and in person. A couple of the presentations will be virtual only.
And will they be recorded?
Yes.
I mean, the keynote speakers are something I'd be interested in for each day.
Yep. They'll be recorded and available to you.
The questions? Thank you very much. A lot of work.
Thanks for having me.
I really appreciate the work that they're doing and fostering this climate and culture of ongoing learning and professional development and spreading it throughout the year. Certainly, our faculty and staff take advantage of many opportunities individually, but to be able to spread it out intentionally throughout the year, I think will be, it will be an adjustment for all of us. And once we get through that adjustment, it really fosters what we're trying to have happen. So the last thing I wanted to talk about, yes, whoop.
Trustees.
It was just a clarifying question for those in the audience that may be new, or new trustees. How does this compare to what we've done? I guess I don't know what I'm comparing to.
Yeah, yeah. That's a great question.
So I thought maybe just for my own clarification or others, to understand how this is different from the years past.
Point. You wouldn't just know that. So traditionally, everybody who has anything they want to talk about submits a proposal, and we schedule everything we can into that week. And so there's a lot of really, really high-quality, good stuff, but it's just gets buried in, there's too much. And people, and faculty are getting ready for classes, and so this is more intentional. We'll have fewer presentations during that week. Those are contract days for the faculty. But we will then have, really promote having the opportunities spread out throughout the year, and we hope to really get more, get more attendance.
You used to have breakout sessions, and there might be two going at one time, right? And you wanted to go to both of them.
Right.
But you couldn't.
Right. And this will be, if there are particular sessions that are popular, we can repeat them as often as we need to. I know the Ed Tech Center has plans to really take advantage of this, so.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. All right. Then the last thing in my report today is just, on behalf of a group that does a lot of work, really cool work, as we transition towards the end of the semester, and that's the team that's worked on our Days of Giving. Historically, it's been the giving tea, and I've not experienced that, just like I've not experienced some in Janet Evening. I haven't had the privilege of experiencing the giving tea. But as an alternative, in a way to engage our colleagues across the campus, we jumped into a period of giving. And so over a twelve-workday period, we looked at a variety of things, and a number of agency partners in the community that are the recipients of the giving, and business partners, as you can see on this. And so just, I mean, to kind of give you a summary of kind of the giving that happened and how it's been distributed, one hundred and seventy-five new and used coats. And thanks to Pride Cleaners, the used coats that were donated, they cleaned them all for us. If I understand correctly, at no charge. They were fantastic partners for us. Four hundred cards were sent to our veterans. Two hundred gifts were gathered. Forty-one pints of blood were donated. They had set a goal of twenty-five. And in addition to that, out of those donations of blood, there were fifteen new donors. There were stockings that were donated and stuffed and will be given away. Cowboy caviar, a large amount of cowboy caviar has been gathered and will be given away. Our wellness walk resulted in boxes of protein bars that are being donated, and a hundred and forty backpacks were donated and filled and will go to children who are in the foster care system. And so I just want to say from the bottom of my heart to our faculty and staff, to our retirees, to our students who have engaged in this, to those of you who may have participated in this, I want to say thank you. Not only do you give day in and day out to our students, but you also choose to support our community who supports us. And so to all of you who participated in this, in our Days of Giving, and particularly to Michelle Clark and the team of, I think, twenty-four people who were actively involved in planning this all out, and the two hundred-plus who have participated in this, thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. And in keeping with appreciation, this is a chance for me to say to our faculty and staff, to our students, and to all of you, thank you for an absolutely fantastic fall semester. Lots of good has happened this fall. And I just want to say thank you, and that as we prepare for a period of time from the twenty-fourth of December through the third of January, reopening on the fourth of January, that the college's offices are closed, you can still register for spring classes, though, online. You don't have to come to campus to do that. But know that when the doors open on January fourth, we will be raring and ready to go and to serve students and to serve students well. But to our team, thank you so much for your fantastic work this semester, and to enjoy a well-deserved break from your daily duties here at the college, and to enjoy time away from here with friends and family and something else other than work all the time. So that concludes my report.
Questions for Dr. Bound? Thank you for that report. Always thorough and helpful, I think, to all of us on the board. Appreciate that. We have no new business. Under old business, we have something that the chair simply forgot to do last month. I had announced at the start of our discussion about the college policy on when we elect officers, that I would also be, and it was on the agenda, appoint a nominating committee. I had, before that meeting, received permission from trustee Cook and trustee Smith Everett to serve on that committee, but I did not ask for a formal approval of the board. So what I'd ask for today, or this evening, is a motion formally approving a nominating committee of trustee Cook and trustee Smith Everett, again, for the purpose of recommending nominations at the January board meeting for chair, vice chair, treasurer, secretary, liaison to Kansas Association of Community College trustees, liaison, two positions to the foundation, one liaison to the Johnson County Educational Research Triangle, and one representative of the college council, which is new. As the college council has been stood up, it requires one trustee on that, so.
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Snyder, seconded by trustee Cross. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no. That carries six zero. Thank you for letting me fix my mistake from last month. That's the only old business. We're now ready for the consent agenda. The consent agenda contains a number of administrative items that have been reviewed pursuant to college policies and are generally considered in one motion and one vote. If any trustee wishes to pull anything from the consent agenda, all they have to do is say so, and we'll consider that separately. Is there anything on the night's consent agenda that any trustee would like to have considered individually?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Sorry, it's me.
I can't see your mouth moving so much.
If I, I don't want to pull something off the consent agenda, but I just want to discuss it. I can just do that in regular discussion of the motion, right?
You can go ahead and make it, yeah. We can do that after the motion if you'd like.
I just wanted to clarify that. I don't, they don't need to be voted on separate. I just have clarifying questions on two of the things.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cook and seconded by trustee Cross. Discussion, trustee Smith Everett.
Yes, I just. Yes, I just had two things that I saw on it that I wanted to have a better understanding of. One is on page 28 of the packet, which is the under grants, contracts, and awards. It says that the Adult Education Supplemental Project FY 2022, for an adult basic education GED prep class for individuals housed at Johnson County Adult Residential Center, two days a week, was a, is a pilot program. I just wanted to know more about that program.
And if I could.
What that means.
Sure. Ask Alisa Walbin to come forward.
Like Jorge Soler. Glad she's here.
Well, thank you for your interest in this. Would you like me to just give you an overview?
Yeah.
Or do you have specific questions?
No.
Okay. So this is one of those opportunities that came from the Department of Education through KBOAR, and our Adult Basic Education, JCAE, program is funded in large part through KBOAR. So KBOAR made us aware of the opportunity of supplemental grant opportunity. So, you know, funds that are not typically available on a consistent basis, but were available, about $18,000. And we have long wanted to offer GED classes at the Adult Residential Center at New Century. So this is a partnership between Johnson County Corrections, specifically the Adult Residential Center, as well as JCAE, and we're planning on having two classes per week from 5:30 to 8:30. So the residents at the Adult Residential Center are within 18 months of release and of completion of their sentences, so they are transitioning and learning skills. If you all recall, we also have a wonderful partnership with N-Circle and the Adult Residential Center. And so, this has been a partnership opportunity we've been nurturing for a long time, and JCAE was delighted to be able to offer GED classes. There are some outcomes with the opportunity, so our goal is to have 10 students in the class at all times. So they complete at different times. As one completes, another one comes in. So hopefully, about 30 people will be able to take advantage of this by June 30th. It needs to be spent by June 30th. You know, part of that transition, an opportunity for them to earn their GED, as well as basic skills, these residents all have to work during the day. So this is on top of that work, their commitment, which is why the classes are at night. And the grant also includes testing fees, so the residents as well pay part of their earnings towards living at the Adult Residential Center. So we didn't want to add on to that burden. We built the testing fees in for the GED. Other questions?
That's great. That's what I want to know, is who we were serving, how many we were serving, and I would guess you can try to renew this grant over time if.
Absolutely. So our hope is to be able to renew it over time. This is a pilot that KBOAR has, you know, given us the opportunity to carry out, and we're looking very forward to it. In fact, I just heard today, so Janice Blansett and her team at JCAE are the ones who put the proposal together. They just told me today that N-Circle, which is directed by Lee Jost, and the Johnson County Library have already teamed up to offer materials to the first students who have signed up, because they may have some downtime over the holidays where they're not working as much, they want to start prepping for the GED class. So the momentum is really there.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
My question.
Gives me my first opportunity to harangue the new trustees that the, although I love all the graduation ceremonies, the GED graduation is my personal favorite. You will get different views maybe from other trustees, but look forward to having even more students celebrate receipt of their GED. Trustee Snyder, you had a consent agenda item?
I did, thank you. So every month, we, as part of the consent agenda packet, we are informed of the, all the people joining the college and those leaving the college this month. There were two retirements that I just wanted to note that really stood out to me. One is Carol Lehman in our Continuing Education Department. Carol is very, very well-known, at least in the groups that I participate in, in Johnson County and many more. And then Emily Beerman, who has led the Midwest Trust Center for many years, and very well-known in our arts community. Two big holes for the college to fill. I'm sure that there are many other fine college employees that are leaving us. It's just those two I have personal experience with and just wanted to wish them well. And they're not leaving, I think Carol's leaving at the end of March, and Emily not till the end of June, but this is my last opportunity to do so.
Excellent point. Thank you, Paul, for that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I did have another.
You don't have to be sorry.
The other, my other question was about the curriculum changes, the new courses and effective academic year, on pages 31 through quite a bit, like maybe 33, 34. I, when we were, when we have learning quality as a committee, I remember getting a broad overview of how these curriculum changes work, why they come about, and there are so many, and there are several pages, that I just wanted to ask for that education again for my part, on understanding how these activations, deactivations, and changes come about to be presented in a list like this.
And if I could invite Dr. McLeod to come forward, and he's the best one to answer that question.
I didn't want to call him out by name in case maybe there was somebody else that sucker in to get.
So our process, it kind of begins and ends with faculty, and particularly the faculty who attend and serve on our Educational Affairs Committee. The faculty in any program can inaugurate new coursework, they can deactivate coursework, or we can modify coursework. Those are three primary things that occur throughout the process of that committee. In the case of deactivations, deactivations tend to happen for one of four reasons. The first being that we actually change a program fundamentally. You'll note in your packet this month, you see a number of courses, a slate of courses that are new being inaugurated, that are labeled as CMGT. Those are construction management. Over the course of the last year, we have moved to get rid of the old designator, which under deactivation, you'll notice slated classes marked CET. That was civil engineering technology, which was the old term for construction management. Construction management is currently in vogue, and so as those classes have been updated, we actually updated the catalog of record to show the new terminology that's used both in the high schools and at the universities. So we're decommissioning all of the old course numbers and the old prefix. So that's, that's one. The second is a shift in a course's utilization, a fundamental change in something in the course. You'll note that in your packet this month, there is being decommissioned, I believe, Electrical Technology 225, but in new courses, you'll note that it's Electrical Technology 230, and it shows industrial wiring as both of those titles. It is the modern version of the same class, but if you look at when we deactivate the 225 class, it will not be until the year '22, '23, '24. That is because students who entered the two-year program this year are already in the catalog of record with the old class and the old number. We don't want to have student development have to redo everybody's degree plan. So we basically teach out the old catalog, finish that cohort of students, and then the new cohort of students will utilize the new number, which has this, it's the same effective course structure, but it changes the number and changes the sequence because of other courses that we've added. So that's a new plan of study. We can decontinue, decommission a course because we have moved out an entire degree, which occasionally we decommission a degree about, I think it was the year that you came on, we decommissioned entrepreneurship, but we kept the classes that were part of the Business Plan Certificate, because that had robust use by the community, and we had a lot of students in those courses. But the rest of the degree did not have matriculators. People weren't finishing the other courses, so we decommissioned the rest of those courses, which then removed them as options for students who were going to be using any entrepreneurship course as an elective, because we didn't want them taking courses that weren't going anywhere, and the degree was decommissioned. So that, that's the third. And then the fourth reason why we shift these sorts of courses is that we completely changed the pedagogy approach and knowledge base of a program. That happens when we redistrict information inside of courses. We don't have any of those this month, but it does happen occasionally that we look at a program, we realize that the program has options that could take a student up to 67 hours, and the faculty recognizes that if we break up the objectives in a course, they would fit more seamlessly inside of other classes, so they will break those pieces up, change three other courses to add those portions in, and then decommission the class that was the standalone, because these things are better taught not in isolation, but in commerce with other concepts. So those are the approaches that we tend to take. It can take up to three months to get a change, because we do have Robert's Rules of Order process, where it has a first read, a second read, and then a vote for ratification. There are questions asked at every one, where faculty go through all the objectives and pull together questions and answers to why are we making a change? What is, what is the substantive change? How are we changing the assessment that's connected to X objective? So it is a, it's a longer process, which is sometimes why it can take us up to a year to inaugurate a completely new program, because we do this for every course that we have in the catalog. Anytime we make a change or bring something new or decommission something, it goes through the entirety of the process.
And who are those people that would make that vote?
That vote is the faculty members who serve on Ed Affairs. We have a regular member and an alternate from every department, and from my office, we have AVP Girbeshan Singh, who sits in on those meetings, and his direct report, who is our catalog director, who makes all of those appropriate changes, because every change that we make has to also be fed up to KBOAR into their system, so that when we get audited by the Higher Learning Commission, what we're teaching on campus matches what the state has approved.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
That was Dr. Mickey McLeod, our Vice President of Academic Affairs. Sounds pretty simple. Thank you. It's a great example of something that sounds simple on its face, that has all of these ripple effects, and you have to take care of every one of them, so, you know, I'm kidding, Mickey. The academic coursework, working its way through the Educational Affairs Committee and all the way through the administration, this process, and the Kansas Board of Regents is amazing, and I appreciate the question and the explanation, because we all need to hear that once in a while. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Does anybody remember if I had a motion in a second? I think I did.
You did have a motion in a second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That motion carries 6-0. I do want, Dr. Brown has informed me, and we want to make sure the board is aware of our internal audit function. The staff has made a request for proposal for folks to do, serve as an interim, internal audit function as we go out to find a, an internal auditor, and those proposals are in, and they'll be reviewed by the administration and brought back to us probably in the January meeting. So, so you know that's coming, that our internal audit function is being, is being paid attention to. Before we move to adjournment, go ahead, Dr. Brown.
But we do need two trustees to serve.
Oh.
On that committee to help us.
That's right.
Because, because the function, audit function reports to the board with a dotted line to me, we felt it would be appropriate to have two trustees serving that capacity to help us with that selection.
I would, I would recommend myself as chair and Trustee Cross as treasurer. If, do we need a, is that, that's not like a subcommittee, do we need?
I think you can.
Would that, would you agree to serve, Lee?
Yes.
Okay. Let's just do it that way.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. That's why you gave me the note, not to announce it, but to get two trustees.
That's okay.
Maybe a little more explicit. All right. Before we, before we ask for motion for adjournment, Trustee Smith Everett was not here initially and would like to make some comments to our two trustees that we're going to miss.
Yes, thank you very much. I had a prior engagement the same time as this week, so I do apologize for that, and I wrote my thoughts to each of you, but I would love to say them out loud for others to hear. To start with, Trustee Snyder, it's been a pleasure to serve with you on this board. I really appreciate you were one of the first trustees to reach out to me after my election, to ask me what I was interested in, what was important to me about serving on this board, and I really appreciate that. Set a tone for me and made me feel very welcome. I also want you to know your legacy will live on. For the two years that I was here, you've said multiple times, sometimes back-to-back meetings, that we needed to have our mission vision and the values up in the boardroom, and look, lo and behold, they magically appeared last month. So thank you very much for advocating for that, as well as the sustainability measures that we both and many other trustees feel is very important at this college. So thank you for that and for your service. Appreciate it. Trustee Cook, it has been an absolute pleasure to serve with you. I feel like I have learned a tremendous amount at every meeting because of your presence on this board, and sometimes it's just your historical knowledge, but other times, it's really your functional knowledge of the way that the college works, or the way that we have gotten to the place where we are. And being on a board with somebody of your tenure, who still has respect for the newbies, who listens with, as we say in my school, with big ears, is really, I really appreciate it. There is a genuineness and a sincerity. I think it began of our bonding over gardening, I'm not sure, but beyond that, I really respect the fact that the other fellow educator on this board has taught me a tremendous amount, and I will forever be grateful for that. So thank you very much for your service on this.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Well, once again, thank you both for your service. Dr. Cook, you, I should give you both the opportunity to close up, so please do.
I would defer to Trustee Snyder if he'd like to say a few words.
Well, thank you, because I was just sitting there thinking, well, Derry's going to say something so eloquent in an office.
Go first.
He's probably going to do a poem.
Yes.
It's going to be a poem in here somewhere.
Well, I mean, I've said this in different forms. This has really been a privilege to serve here for four years. I came into this, you know, knowing something about the college as being a county citizen, but, but really opened my eyes to everything that really is done here, and it's such an incredible level. So I've really appreciated working with not only our trustees, but the fine staff, Dr. Brown, Dr. Sopchik before you, and the cabinet, and everyone in between. Thank you for the privilege, and I look forward to seeing all the great things that happen from here. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would really like to thank all the current trustees for putting up with me, past trustees as well. It's been, it's been a terrific 12-year learning experience for me. I would like to thank Trustee Cross. I've come to realize that he was very instrumental in me receiving the ACCT lifetime membership. So Trustee Cross, thank you for, for doing that. I greatly value and appreciate that. I'd like to thank the college. And I've come to define the college with four pillars in no particular order, but of course, number one, students. Daniel, thank you. The community we serve is, is really foundational to our college. Our human resources, including faculty, staff, administrators, and all of the people that come together to meet our daily needs and serve students in the teaching and learning mode. And then, and then the fourth pillar, I would count the foundation. We've heard reports about the generous donors we have, 1. what, Kate, 7.1.7 million dollars in scholarships this year, I think. So that's just really commendable, and so I really want to thank everybody for giving me the chance to spend a few, a few days with you. When people say, well, what do you feel good about? And, and today I was visiting with, with David Krug and Jim Leicher about, you know, do trustees get enough thanks? And I said, I get thanks every day when a student acknowledges that this college changed their life, changed their pathway. And that's a combination of a relationship with a faculty member, or a staff member, or administrative relationships, and that, to me, is the thank you. And this college changes the lives of so many people, so when we think of our mission of inspiring students, inspiring learning, transforming lives to improve communities, I really thank the trustees for holding steadfast to that mission. I think it's, I think it's really valuable. Trustee Engram mentioned earlier that the KCCT had a workshop recently on how do we, how do we do things? How do we spend our time? We all spend an enormous amount of time, whether in committees, whether day-to-day with faculty and planning, and a new learning development plan, all of this takes a lot of time. And so I, I couldn't help but refer to Long fellow talking about time. What is time? He said.
He said, is it the shadow on the dial? Is it the striking of the clock? Is it the running of the sand in a sand dial? Is it the difference between day and night? Or is it the differentiation of the seasons from winter to spring to summer to fall? Is it defined by days, weeks, months, years, centuries? And he will say, these are but arbitrary and outward signs of time. They're just simply the measures of time. And he says, time is the life of the soul. Time is the life of the soul. So then, what's the soul? What, how did we find soul? And absent from our various religious beliefs of soul, the dictionary defines it as a principle of life, a feeling, a thought, an action, whether it be by man, woman, or the organization itself. It's the essential element of something. It's the embodiment of some quality. And it defines its personality and its character. And so, this college has a very unique character, a very unique personality. We have very talented people every day, using their time to make decisions. And so, I would leave all of you with this challenge. I'd leave all of us, even people that are going to still be in the neighborhood, but still be involved with the foundation and other projects. Here's the question I leave us all with you, and it's from John Greenleaf Whittier. Not the whole poem, Greg, just one line from one of his poems. Whittier, as you know, was an American poet from 1807 to 1892. So we think, a long time ago, this man said this. What my soul is my errand here? What my soul is my purpose here? So I'd leave that all as a challenge to all of us. What is our purpose here? And it's to help people like this young man sitting in the front row. And whether you're 18 or 19, or 79 or 89, taking a class at Johnson County Community College, the soul of this college, the soul of all of us, helps these people become something different than they were today, to be better tomorrow, transforming lives. So thanks for the opportunity. I really enjoyed it. I've learned a lot. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for adjournment.
I'd like to second the motion. Trustee Cook just moved to adjourn.
Oh, second.
Trustee Cook moved to adjourn. Trustee Snyder seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
That passes 5 to 1. We are adjourned. Thank you all.